The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
I'm gonna call the meeting order. Would you all rise for the
Religious allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the first and the last of all.
Okay, first thing on the agenda is Maria with passages update. Okay. We'll go on. Lindsey? JDI transfer request?
So, she was really wanting to spend some spring break. Witnessing government and
Well Nora, come right up front here. I have a seat at the table. Come on, sweetie, you're alright.
So, without that you approved the transfer request, JDI has grant funding each year and every so often we don't use everything that's been requested in category that has been requested. We have a selection of money that we've granted. So, part of the reason why some of the money is being requested is because of the Miami Village, the 25th, the 5,000 dollars for therapy that is out there. And luckily, they have that, somebody buy it for us. So, the money that we have set aside for that, we were requesting that we use that money still for Miami Village and the Mission 25 to be spent this summer. So, last year we did something, awesome. So, they're gonna do campaign ahead, we're gonna send the girls to the company's people project, and we're gonna support the boys, we're gonna put on a costume. So, that's what the money will be used for, we just have to
Okay, any questions for Lindsey?
Let me make a motion, we approve the transfer request.
A second. I have a motion by Thor, a second by John, that we approve the transfer request. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed say, show that it's seven oh unanimous. Thank you. Scott?
Just real quick, I wanted to update you on the Governor's Health Commission. It's going through, went through the Senate, it's going through the House. If legislation is produced on that, what they'll be doing is asking the county governments to either make application or not to that, just so you're aware, in the next couple of months, there may be coming for to you with an application to sign or reject for applying to those funds that may or may not be given by the legislature. Any questions so far on any of that, that's a big to-do? Any questions at all on the Health Department while I'm here?
What the school health lays on, what, how much time does that go?
So, they have, the last two years, they have had a grant that the counties could apply for and have hire a nurse or someone in the medical field to liaison with superintendents or school systems to do well child checks, update immunizations, get kids to the dentist, things like that. Push vaccines, things like that type. Our county did not get involved in those grants because we reached out to the superintendents and nobody was interested. So, once again, that grant is up, right now was actually ended March 31st for the application, and I sent emails, two emails, out to the superintendents, and only got one response back, and they weren't necessarily for or against it, they just wanted to know what it was about. So, we did not apply again for that. If you were to accept the proposal that the state gives, that would be something that you'd have to position and be filled, that would be somebody that would liaison between the superintendents and the school systems regarding vaccinations, well child checks, dentist things, basically fulfilling the role of a health nurse right now. I don't, all of our superintendents and all of our school systems have nursing, almost in every school. So, we're not deficient in that area. However, many counties don't have nursing in their school system, they have to go somewhere else for that. Indiana overall is behind on back childhood, normal childhood vaccinations, period. That's kind of was their push for that, is to get somebody in there to, hey Johnny, you haven't had your mumps or rubella, you need to get into the Health Department, or do it here at school, or whatever. We have tried and have been somewhat successful with doing vaccinations at the school itself. However, we'd like to see that done more often, especially during kindergarten roundup, the sixth grade people, high school, because all the kids are at school those days, and we could just get them done then, instead of making a thousand appointments at the Health Department. But we have limited success getting into the school to do that.
I was under the impression that certain vaccinations were required before a child couldn't attend school.
They are, however, the parent can file a religious exemption, and many of those are used in our schools to get out of that.
So, if they're gonna file that, then how are you gonna give them a shot in anyway?
Yes. A lot of times, previously when schools sent out those letters, they sent them out in May, so they have all summer to do those shots. And then come September or October, they're scrambling, calling us, begging us to stay late, or do this, or get their kid in, because they waited, and now they are behind, or the kid won't be returned to school. So, even though they have that, we still have a lot of people, so. We really like to be able to go into schools at the times the kids are there, and just get them done there. It'd be so much easier to do that. You know, we can file insurances, we can file Medicaid, we can do all those things now, so. It's really no hindrance, it's just parents taking the time to come in and get it done.
It says here you would have to hire additional staff, how many?
Depends on what programs they would have us completed. Right now, they're looking at additional five to six programs they'd have us do. They say that we can partner with local existing people, like, say, one of the things is to reduce trauma, so we would say bicycle helmets, car seats, things like that. So, maybe if we partnered with Babe or somebody else, and provide them the funding, they could do that project. But again, we'd still have to collect the data, report that data, and all that stuff. So, there's always gonna be a backend to the work, whether we use partners or not. If we did everything that they're asking us to do, I would say we'd have to hire at least three, if not four people. But I'm not sure that you want us to do everything that they have on that schedule either.
But can you tip in too?
No. That's the thing, is they're not rolling it out in sections, they're rolling out everything, to do all this stuff, which is a lot. So, if you've read any of the paperwork I've sent you, not only do they have the programs, but inside those programs, they have individual deadlines, types of things you have to do specifically every month. So, basically, my position would be fulfilling, gathering the data, reporting that for every program every month, and you're looking at that 15 programs altogether. Some of the things don't really apply to us, that's why we're having a difficult time getting it wrapping our heads around it, so like referring people to acute care. So, in our area, we have lots of physicians, we have a local hospital, we have Fort Wayne next door. Most people don't have a hard time finding a doctor or being placed in, with the doctors that would do diabetes, congestive heart failure, things like that, there's plenty of that around here. In some parts of states, that's not true. So, the Health Department is a liaison for that community to get to those professionals. It's something we probably wouldn't do here, because there really hasn't been a need for that. So, again, there's lots of things in there that maybe we would do, it wouldn't do. That's why I came to the Personnel Committee on the two things I thought were important for us to tackle, but just letting you know, there'll be more that will come down. And it's being changed as we speak in the legislature. They've already reduced them out that they've asked for, by 25 million. Who knows if the House will reduce that more, or what will happen with that? So, there's a lot in the weeds that you don't see, you know, these programs seem really wonderful at the top, but then they're really heavy underneath for the county to do. Any other questions from, anything that's not Governor, Health Commission? So, I keep you updated. I probably won't come back again until they ask for something, so. Thanks Scott.
Okay, thank you Scott. Next on the agenda, South Whitley Library Board reappointment. Laura, are you here on behalf of the library?
I make a motion to reappoint Alice Nicodemus to the South Whitley Library Board.
A second.
Okay, I have a motion by Tom, a second by Joan, that we reappoint Alice Nicodemus to the South Whitley Library Board. Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote, all those in favor, raise your right hand, all those opposed, say. Okay. Next, you have in the packet from Jennifer concerning amending the policy manual, 8.10 overtime compensation slash BLSA status. I don't know if you want to say anything about that, Teresa?
The commissioners did decide to revert back to the old policy where all time would count. The new policy that went into effect around the beginning of the year would only be actual hours worked, and then you would have to get to 40, and then you would get overtime. But we decided to revert back to the previous policy.
So, the previous policy was the hours are gonna count for PTO, holidays, emergency closing?
Correct.
All of it?
Why was it changed? Why did they change it from what you're asking us to do now versus what it was previously? Why was that changed?
Well, as you remember, there was a committee formed that went through the entire manual, and that's what they have decided. So, the whole policy was, the whole policy manual was refreshed.
And that's when that occurred, the change, that now we want to revert back, okay, thank you.
This had been changed, correct? Now, we're changing it back to what it originally was? Okay? My comment on this is that ever since I've been on council, we've used WISK, is it? On giving recommendations on positions and salaries. The change, I believe, came from our labor attorney who recommended that change, which was passed, is that correct?
We would have to ask Jen and she's out this entirely.
That was my understanding, is that, which, we'll have to get a clarification perhaps on this. But my understanding was that our attorney said the labor standards now is what we had changed it to. And I think it met some resistance, and so I think they took another look at it. But my question is, if we go with one, one body that recommends this, and we stay with that, why don't we do it with our labor attorney? I don't know. That's just a thought I had. And I don't know if everybody totally understands that, and should we table it for a meeting till Jennifer gets back and get a little more clarification? That's, that's up to you guys.
I, I wouldn't be opposed to that. I expected Jennifer to be here today and to have some conversation before I made a decision on it, so I don't know that I'm prepared either without that conversation, so.
I believe.
I would, at this time, go ahead and make a motion that we postpone this until our next scheduled meeting.
Table it?
Yeah.
Okay. I have a motion by Thor, a second by Kim, that we table this till our next meeting to get more clarification from Jennifer. Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote on, on the table. All those in favor of tabling this to our next meeting, raise your right hand. Table. Okay, Tom, you wanted to?
I'll take the Personnel Committee, yeah, we met last month. Since January, we've had a lot of requests on changing things around, or wanting to send back WISK, and I guess us three that's on that Personnel Committee decided that we were making a lot of quick decisions on what we were doing with money, and we've been tight on the budget the last two years, so. We've, we've decided we're gonna slow down and dig deeper and look a little longer into the recommendations that, that the department had wants. It's not saying we're not gonna do it, it's just we're gonna slow down, make sure we got every angle covered, and the money's there, and it's gonna be there in the future, and so that's, so we're just gonna not take a step back, we'll just go slow down a little bit, look everything over. I don't know if you two have further comment on that?
No, I just think we need to be a little more informed for each department that comes forth. We need to investigate a little bit on what's available.
So, it's just reporting to council, that's, that's kind of the position that the Personnel Committee has taken, right?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions on that? Thank you. Commissioner, are you doing a Commissioner's report, Teresa?
Yes, there's not too much to report on. Yesterday, finally, they started moving some dirt over at the jail site. And the overtime policy, which you guys already discussed. And then also the website refresh, just to be a little bit more user-friendly, we're looking into a few options, all of them seem to be about the same price, if not cheaper. And also, looking at some help with public relations, just getting the word out on what's going on in Whitley County Government. We've been looking at a few things, maybe like the bi-monthly newsletter that they could sign up for and put their email in, that's super affordable, and then different departments could add things on to that, whether it be like tax season, or assessments, or whatever, and they could get that. It's very affordable to build that, think of email addresses if people would like to do that. And also, social media, obviously, not many people read the newspaper these days, so they'll be looking at that as well. The Internet Committee, that's been going really, really well. Last week, we had our second meeting, and I know Dale's here, so he'll speak more on that as well. And we do have a member here, I'll have him come up and introduce himself. And also, the art plan is on our radar, we do know that we need to amend that and update that as well.
Any questions for Teresa? Commissioner? Thank you. Talking about taxes, Tiffany, I think the tax statements are going out this week in the mail, so might be getting some calls from taxpayers, so just to let you know, and those are due the 10th, is that correct, May 10th? So, those are going out. Okay, you have minutes in front of you?
Make a motion to accept the minutes as presented. Second.
I have a motion by Thor, a second by Nick, that we approve the March 7th minutes as presented. Any further discussion on that? I'll call for the vote, all those in favor of approving the March 7th minutes, raise your right hand. All those opposed, passes. Okay. Public comment? Dale?
Yeah.
Please introduce yourself.
Good morning, Dale Booth, Whitley County Economic Development. I just wanted to give council just an update specifically on broadband. We don't have an ASH today, but we will send some advanced materials to you shortly to review, and an ASH for the next time council gets together. We, you know, in an effort just to kind of get some more stakeholders involved, and as more internet service providers are coming into the county, like many counties, we wanted to put a task force together with, you know, folks from different sectors in the county business, and, and both small and large. And we've had several meetings to date, and we have, I want to introduce, you know, somebody from REMC, Chris Todd, to come up here for a second. But we've got Brandon Farrell, a local Realtor, we've got Nick and Teresa, who are on it, myself, Chris, and also Matt Brinkman, Region 3A, so we're trying to get a kind of a decent-sized group as we look at all these grants that are coming up. And I just wanted to have Chris just talk briefly about REMC, and then I'll come up and just prep you a little bit on what the ASH might be next time.
Morning.
Morning.
Brandon was planning on joining me this morning too, but he's not, been sleeping a lot lately with the infinite home, so mornings are rough. So, really excited to be part of this broadband task force. At Northeastern REMC, I'm the Director of Marketing and Communications, and I also handle any of the outside companies that'll contact us for help with trying to bring broadband into the county. Our membership is all of Whitley County, except for the city proper, and then chunks of Allen and Northwest and Southwest Allen County. And we know that the, the internet is not having any good access to internet, it's a problem for our members. And so, it's something that we decided we couldn't be the complete solution for, but we've been trying to be part of the solution for a long time, which means we have infrastructure that's already existing in the county. We have poles, and right-of-way, and access, which makes it a lot easier for companies like SURF, or the Main Street that I've been talking to recently, to say, hey, if you're gonna engineer a plan on how to get to people, and they don't have to bury cable, or they don't have to, you know, put up their own facilities, they can just kind of run along our pole line, it makes it a lot easier for them to get from point A to point B. We also have a, a really small, limited network that goes in between our substations, that, you know, when SURF came to us, I guess it was probably last year, to try to get from Pearson to South Whitley, they would have never been able to build this line to pick up Whitco without our help, and so we wanted to help facilitate that. So, being on this task force is exciting, because these guys have got a whole bunch of different internet service providers that are ready to be able to take advantage of the state funding that's gonna be coming out. And so, for us, it's about the membership, being able to get access to these things in a really, you know, a quick way. So, it's, you know, the funding's gonna come out, here's how we can take advantage of it, but in order to do that, meet some people, and Dale will talk about it, we need some, need something to go out with this task force to be able to make sure that we're ready when the funds drop. Otherwise, it'll just go away, and it'll go somewhere else. So, like I said, just excited to help, to try to get this moving, it's something that's needed. And it's not, it's, the money's there, so it's just about trying to take advantage of it. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you. And congratulations to your son on his fine career and his accomplishments this year for Carol.
Thank you. Yeah, so as Chris said, Indiana Next Level Connections is, is starting a grant cycle here in a couple of weeks, so we want to be ready for that. Again, the county, or any public group, doesn't actually apply for those, the internet service providers do. Another reason for the task force, there's multiple service providers who are coming into the county. We don't always know, you know, who they are, what they're about, so we want to bring them to the table as well. And then, there is, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars coming shortly from the federal money through the state of Indiana for rural broadband. DeKalb, Wabash, and Allen County have used a certain consultant to help with that, he's been pretty successful. The ASH, I have copies just of what he's doing. Prior to the next meeting, I will get you some bullet points, proposal, and a little more information for you to read, and the ASH will probably be that consultant for kind of a retainer for several months as we go through this process. Been pretty successful in the past, and I'll spell all that out. And so, just wanted to give you that update, and, and keep your eyes open for an email probably come through.
Okay.
Thanks Dale.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Public comment?
Morning.
Morning.
Try my voice a little bit, weather, spring weather hitting in Patterson, 48, 80 west, 500 north. In December was when I learned about the jail project, and I came here in January to bring some concerns to you, because I had been informed that the vote was still supposed to come back to this committee, or to this council, and that proved to not be the case. That it had ended with the commissioners. Most of you had involvement in this project in one way or another, whether it was long-term or just voting toward the end, I'm not sure of all your terms when they started. Some of the issues with this location, or this project could have been avoided, had, we had a little more transparency, and a little more just permanent access to information than we have had. Those who are concerned have been told that their concerns are just a non-issue, or we just don't get an answer, we get silence. And that, that's just not good, it's not good to not really get an answer to things. This project location has problems now and down the road. Currently, problems are still the lighting, or poor lighting, the no sidewalks, in, in addition to the the poor road quality, inmates released on foot, and the possible speed of responding officers. All those things go together in this case, and the only answer that we've received really is from the mayor saying that at this time sidewalks are not going to be added to this area, because it's just not a priority, it's a low foot traffic area. Many people, maybe you've been out there, and it hasn't been busy, there's plenty of times that Opportunity Drive and not Connection Way, it's empty, it's, it's quiet, like it was last night after a 4-H meeting, there was, there was nothing going on out there, but there are plenty of times that it is very busy, and it's dark. And it isn't just me, I'm not the only one that has almost hit a darkly clothed pedestrian walking down Connection Way in the dark hours. Those who, who work out there, or frequent the area, can attest to that as well. The no sidewalks, the no lighting, it just, where, when you release your inmates and on foot from that spot, what is your plan? I know Allen County has plans to have, possibly have them bus places, but if you're releasing them, and there are no sidewalks, are they gonna be walking down the middle of the road? What is your plan for that? Because the traffic, we have senior center buses, we have school buses that go to the movie theater, the, the traffic, the movies are let out, and also worse with taking their equipment back there. I know, I've been stopped on those roads, and other people have as well, because of unloading unloading and loading of equipment, some of those, those things that be, being taken back there, they can't even turn around properly because of the road, and then if people are walking on their roads, on those roads, where are they supposed to go as well? So, in addition to all those problems, those things all go together, but in the future, future business development in the US-30 project are gonna reduce the response time for these officers, because they have one access point. That's it. They can, they come out of their driveway, and they can go one way, and it's, it's gonna get harder. And so, the thought is, will this council be voting again another twenty, thirty years to spend even more money to build a facility that has better access for officers, better response time? You're moving your ETJ, or the, the city's moving the ETJ, they're spreading, they're working on that, spreading their jurisdiction, so then it's even further that, that our Sheriff's Department has to get before they respond to the areas that they're responsible for, the people that they're trying to serve in our county. So, questions that definitely the officers and the people that frequent that area need answered, is the street lighting going to be improved? Will responding officers have speed limits in Armstrong Park? Do you have a second access road planned for that property? What is future access, what is the future access plan in relation to the US-30 project, when other access points to US-30 are blocked, and they have to travel further? And where are your released inmates supposed to walk? So, those are some things that a lot of people would like to have answers to, I know a lot of people have just given up trying to get answers, they said, they've, I've been told that there's no point. So, silence sometimes just shows that you don't care, or you just haven't thought your project through all of them. So, finding a way to get this information to the public, like Allen County has pages on their, their county website, that has all the links to very detailed property, property photos, documents, their process, from, I think it goes back to last spring, that they have information and updates, so just wanted to bring those things to light, since dirt is moving.
Thank you. Anyone else? Have you been able to hear us today? Back, back, okay, we've repositioned the microphones and so forth, and I think we've made an effort to talk into them, so, good. Okay. I have nothing else on the agenda. Councilman Barrett? Councilman West, Councilwoman Wester?
I have nothing, thank you.
Thor, do you have anything, Councilman?
I do not, thank you.
Nick, you have anything?
No, I'm good.
Tom?
I have nothing.
Kim?
I have nothing.
And I have nothing. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.